I would like to call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. It's a little bit past 8:30, close enough for government work. So Lisa, will you go ahead and call the order?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Commissioners Boujack.
President.
Diaz.
Here.
Pakla. Woodin.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
LaGrand.
Here.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks. Teal.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Ponstein. Hildenbrand.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Antor. Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 members present, five absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much for our invocation. I will call on Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I spent the last few days since I got the text from Ms. Regina to remind me about today's invocation, thinking about what I wanted to talk about. I thought about the moment in history that we are currently in, the things that we have lived through the last couple of years, the things that we see on our TV screens every night, and I found these words that were said by a man that we still learn about or that kids still learn about in their elementary schools and their middle schools and high schools. These words that were said in December of 1964, almost 60 years ago. And they read, "I refuse to accept despair as the final response to the ambiguities of history. I refuse to accept the idea that the is-ness of man's present nature makes him morally incapable of reaching up for the internal awtness that forever confronts him. I refuse to accept the idea that man is mere flotsam and jetsam in the river of life, unable to influence the unfolding events which surround him. I refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless midnight of racism and war that the bright daybreak of peace and brotherhood can never become a reality. I refuse to accept the cynical notion that nation after nation must spiral down a militaristic stairway into the hell of thermonuclear destruction. I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality. This is why right temporarily defeated is stronger than evil triumphant. I believe that even amid today's mortar bursts and whining bullets, there is still hope for a brighter tomorrow. I believe that wounded justice lying cross street on the blood flowing streets of our nations can be lifted from this dust of shame to reign supreme among the children of men. I have the audacity to believe that peoples everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies, education and culture for their minds, and dignity, equality, and freedom for their spirits. I believe that what self-centered men have torn down, men other centered can build up. I still believe that one day mankind will bow before the altars of God and be crowned triumphant over war and bloodshed. A nonviolent redemptive good will proclaim the rule of the land. And the lion and the lamb shall lie down together, and every man shall sit under his own vine and victory, and none shall be afraid." I still believe that we shall overcome." These words were said by Dr. Martin Luther King on December 10, 1964, as he was accepting the Nobel Peace Prize. As we prepare to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and as you recite the Pledge of Allegiance from now until the rest of your days conclude, I hope that you remember that we have much more in common than what we may sometimes remember. And that the people that we see every day on the streets of Grand Rapids, of Sparta, Wyoming, and Kentwood are the people that we do this job for. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, for our special order of business, we have a presentation from the Grand Rapids Whitewater folks. Mr. Matt Chapman is here to present to us. Good morning.
Morning. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all of you for allowing us to be here today. I'm actually going to pause and introduce Janet Corn, a member of our Board of Directors and also, as many of you know, very integral to the Experience Grand Rapids team, and she's going to kind of start with some opening remarks.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for listening to our update on our project that we've been working so diligently on for many years. Part of my work at Experience Grand Rapids you're probably familiar with, and that is to promote tourism and invite people to come here, but also part of my work is to participate in community-wide as well as statewide efforts that involve tourism and bringing more people to both our local county and also to the state of Michigan. And one of those that I'm proud to serve and support is the Grand Rapids Whitewater Project, and really this catalytic project in the river that we believe has also led to many other developments along the river and really encouraging the community and others to embrace the river even more strongly than I remember seeing this back when we were going to build a convention center, and that was a long time ago. And we made a big decision to add windows to the outside so that our meeting planners could actually view the river and their conferences could be experiencing the destination while they were here. When we talked to our meeting planners about this project, they're excited that their meetings will be held right in the center of this new revitalized river. When we add the rapids back into the river and we make it more accessible to all, and when we improve the fishery, it will become really a statement for us to be able to center our outdoor recreational marketing and attraction to the destination around. You take what's going to happen in the river and along the river, both from a participatory way but also a pedestrian spectator type experience, also the education that's going to be there, and you combine that with all the amazing trails and networks that we have throughout Kent County and the fishery, and this becomes a really unique destination where the outdoor recreation is right in the center of a city. And that's really unique and that's what sets us apart as a destination when we promote against, we're competing with every other place throughout the country for our visitors and for meetings and conventions. So I'm happy to support the Grand Rapids Whitewater effort. Experience Grand Rapids remains an advocate for this project and how important it is to do this work to really be able to fully benefit from all the other projects that are alongside the river. So, Matt?
Thank you, Janet. So we thought that part of this day, obviously we understand that there's been a number of changes to the project. This has been ongoing for many, many years. I went back and was actually viewing some presentations from as early as 2017. So there's a lot here. I have a lot to get through. I'll try to go through that, but I thought it would be helpful to just kind of remind everyone of this original vision, of this catalytic vision that Janet had mentioned. Grand Rapids Whitewater started in 2009 with this idea of restoring the rapids and bringing vibrancy to downtown, recognizing that not a lot of people were using this river. The original project area, as it kind of grew, encompassed a project from roughly Ann Street on the north boundary to Fulton Street on the south. That's kind of the combined total project area. And we've always been cognizant of the fact that it's really kind of two separate projects, two very distinct and different areas of the river. We have the lower reach project, which is roughly from Bridge Street to Fulton Street. And in this portion of the project, it's historically believed that this was a boulder-strewn rapid, large granite limestone boulders. So it was restoring that section of the river. In the upper reach, so roughly from Bridge Street up to Ann Street, behind the Sixth Street Dam, we know is an outcropping of limestone bedrock that was likely the actual historic Grand Rapids that the city was named after. So the goal of the total project is to remove those dams in the river, do that in a responsible way, in a way that can enhance fishery habitat, prevent migration of invasive species, protect federally and state listed endangered species, and as Janet mentioned, create these economic, environmental, and ecological benefits that serve as a catalyst for not just the city but for the county and the region as we look at all of the amazing parks, trails, and infrastructure that's currently being planned along the edges of the river. Back in 2014, there was an economic impact study done that estimated this project in total, excuse me, would produce roughly $15 to $19 million per year just in the forms of new visitors to the river. That study looked at not just whitewater kayakers, that was one user group, but it looked at enhanced angling opportunities, enhanced opportunities for other non-motorized recreational uses in the river, the addition of people coming to the river edges with the parks and the trails observing the river, that sort of thing. It also looked at increases in property taxes and the land use values along the river edges, which again, I think as we look at some of the investments currently underway within the county, that vision, that early vision, has helped spur a lot of that really incredible growth that we have. So this early vision, as I mentioned, was very heavily whitewater focused, perhaps maybe ambitiously so. As we look at the lower reach, roughly the lower reach boundaries here, the original vision started with as many as 11 different whitewater wave features. All the gray material that you see on the screen was imported rock and boulder designed to help create habitat and restore that boulder rapid. There has been a number of conversations over the years, as many of you know, with state and federal agencies. We have at least seven different state and federal agencies that have some jurisdiction over the process. So as we developed the project, as the design evolved, as we heard feedback from the agencies, one of the things that we continued to hear was that we needed to reduce the impact to the river bottom. Even though historically we know that this river bottom has been stripped of rock and boulder, we had to do the least amount of impact to the river bottom to put rock and boulder back into place. So that design evolved over the years, as many as 11 whitewater wave features, down to eight, down to just four features that were proposed in October of 2020 when we submitted the previous permit application to the state of Michigan. That process took two years just for that application, permit application to be complete. There was additional study and design and review that the state kept coming back for, and finally in August of 2022, we received that completeness determination. We were working with the state on some remaining issues, and then in December of 2022, there was a formal objection letter from the EPA. When there's a formal objection letter on a process like this, that initiates a 90-day time clock where all of those issues need to be resolved within 90 days or a permitting authority actually transfers from the state to the federal government. We worked closely with the city and with our state partners and EPA to try to resolve those issues, and in March of 2023, we realized that we were not going to fully resolve all of those issues by the time that time clock expired, and therefore the city had to chose to withdraw the permit application and really work with the state agencies to do a full project reset. So the next week after the permit application was withdrawn, we went to Lansing. We met with the city, with state and federal agencies, and we all agreed on a new process and a new framework that would guide the new redesign of the project. So we spent a couple months all working on these framework objectives that would, you know, things that must be included in this project that we must achieve. We developed six additional design concept alternatives in addition to the seven that we previously had designed. And by August of 2023, we had a 30% design concept that the state agencies had provided permission for us to move towards a final design. So from August to March of 2024, we did an incredible amount of work to complete 30% design all the way to a 90% design, redo all of the previous reports that we had to do, all of the hydraulic studies, the fish habitat passage studies, and then in May of 15th of 2024, we submitted a permit application package to the state of Michigan. That permit application has been deemed administratively complete. Eagle has held a public hearing and that process has concluded now, and now the process is currently out for, or the application package is currently out for federal review until October 15. So we're very encouraged by the fact that this time it didn't take two years and that we are moving through that process. The purpose of the lower reach project, as it was provided in the application, is to improve the public safety, restore aquatic habitat, diversity and suitability for Great Lakes native fish and mussel species, and to enhance the river access and use. So access has always been a key driver of this project as well, knowing how difficult it is in many places to just touch the river. I won't mention all of these objectives here or read through all of them, just in the interest of time, and I know you likely have questions, but these were the objectives that really truly guided the process of redesigning this project. And these were not just objectives that were agreed upon by the city or Grand Rapids Whitewater, but also by representatives from Eagle and the DNR. Some of these objectives took a little bit more priority than others. Obviously, a protection of infrastructure, bridges, flood wall was key. So we went through a several week process just to determine how do we make sure that we're not increasing scour around bridges and things like that. Another one that really drove the process, and I can say with a lot of confidence because we had weekly meetings with members from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Fisheries Division, we were doing at times rock-by-rock design iterations where we would have a design concept. We would, you know, maybe put a riffle feature or a boulder feature, which I'll show you in a second here. We'd rerun some modeling and habitat evaluations, and then we'd say, okay, this area is too fast for fish, so we'd redesign it. So the DNR was very heavily involved in this process and really helped us lead to the final design concept that we have today. The image on the screen here, this is the actual previous design that was submitted in 2020 that I mentioned, and I just want to kind of touch on it just so that we can kind of show you all what was in that design concept versus what we are now proposing. So that all four of these low-head dams within the lower reach would be removed as part of this process, and those dams do hold back water. They provide grade control in the river. So those four dams would have been replaced with three, what you see, channel-spanning structures here that consisted of a constructed riffle, a long gradual kind of slope that produces whitewater. And then in the areas where the red are, that was the four proposed whitewater recreational wave features. So as we've gone through this process with the state and federal agencies, we've been asked to reduce the footprint of the project just to within the boundaries of what it takes for the equipment to go out and remove the four low-head dams. So we've shrunk up the footprint area. Unfortunately, all four of the whitewater waves were removed from this design, and then I'll get into some of the other elements that we added in place of that. Just to kind of quickly go back and touch on, I know there were some questions on the previous budget versus this budget. We discussed that last week at the Finance Committee meeting. The total project budget estimate for the total project, upper and lower reaches, was roughly $45 million. Roughly 24 to 26 of that was for the upper reach, and $15 to $19 million was the last estimate that we had back in 2019 and 2020 for the lower reach. Of that, the county's investment of $1.4 million is approximately 8.2% of that lower reach investment. As I mentioned, we are going through a design process now. We do have a, the first cost estimate for the lower reach project has come back, and estimating right now between $18 and $20 million. Again, that's an estimate. It has not gone out for bid. We are still doing our due diligence, going through that estimate line by line, looking for opportunities for cost savings, whether that's in materials, labor, trucking, any of those types of things. So those conversations are ongoing. So in terms of this new project, the county's investment is approximately 7.2%. Briefly, just wanted to mention the upper reach project. I'm only talking about the lower reach project because that's what we have permits for. The upper reach project was placed on hold by the Great Lakes Fishery Commission when the permit application was withdrawn, and that was in an attempt to make sure that whatever is built in the upper reach, if there's a new lamprey barrier, if the Sixth Street Dam is removed, that it works with the lower reach project and that nothing in the lower reach would impact the ability to not have sea lamprey upstream. So that project will resume. There will be a full separate environmental review process that the Great Lakes Fishery Commission will lead, and they will resume that process once the permits for the lower reach have been issued. I did just want to mention that the Great Lakes Fishery Commission has secured approximately, I apologize, it's actually $22 million in federal funding through some Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funds as well as an annual appropriation for their sea lamprey control budget. So there is approximately $22 million in hand at the Fishery Commission already that can help address the concerns of invasive sea lamprey and whatever we have to do to replace a 100-year-old Sixth Street Dam. So now I want to show you where we're at in terms of what we will build and what we will construct. And if I can pause for just a second here. So this, as you see on the screen here, this is the new design concept. And again, we're working closely with the state. There were elements of river restoration projects that the state of Michigan prefers. They know that they pass fish. They know they provide habitat benefits, and they know that these are appropriate treatments for removals of dams. This is called natural channel design. Natural channel design works really well for natural channels. The Grand River is very unnatural. It's confined by concrete flood walls. We have 20-some bridge piers. It's very difficult to take a cookie cutter natural channel design concept and just plop it into the river. So what we were able to do is use, through the different elements that I'll walk through here, we were able to create a similar concept as the last time. We removed all four of the low-head dams. We now have two of these wide channel-spanning structures as opposed to the three that we previously showed. These constructed riffles, as you see, will create whitewater. They will produce rapids. They are designed to provide that gradient and the responsible distribution of the hydraulic energy of the river, but they're also very intentionally designed to improve fish passage and habitat availability for mussels, sturgeon, and some of our state threatened endangered species. So you can see some of those images. The bottom two images actually, for reference, are from the Boardman River Project, the Boardman Otto Way River Restoration up in Traverse City. They removed two large dams and built some of these constructed riffles. So in front of Anabouen Park and the Amway, you'll see kind of these two riffle features. Incorporated into the riffle feature in front of Anabouen Park, or what we refer to as the Dam Two location, we also worked with the state to create this kind of boulder-drop structure. So this first structure is a little bit taller. There will be higher, faster velocities over this, and this boulder-drop structure will kind of emulate the fish ladder that we see at Sixth Street Park today, at the Sixth Street Dam, and it provides opportunities for fish to jump up over into these deeper pools, rest, and then continue as they migrate upstream. This is also a unique structure specifically designed for this river, something that the state and federal agencies were actually intrigued about, and hopefully we could apply some sort of concept of this to other river restoration projects throughout the country. Emergent habitat boulders, so this is probably one of the biggest changes that you'll see incorporated in the project. Every one of those little blue dots on the screen represents a boulder or a boulder cluster, roughly four to six-foot boulders. Again, we know historically that this reach of the river consisted of hundreds of these granite and limestone boulders. So we are fortunate that the state recognized the benefit that boulders and habitat diversity of flow provides to this ecosystem, and even though they previously wanted us to limit the impact areas to only the areas of the dam removal, they did see the benefit in these additional boulders, and that's why you are seeing some boulders will be installed downstream of Pearl Street where there are no existing dams, where there's no requirement to go out and, you know, actually excavate that river. So the whole reach will be treated with these boulders. Again, at high water, you will see whitewater as representative in the photos there, and at low water, that kind of just helps to stick out. You'll see some of that different flow, diversity in flow paths. And lastly, the last treatment that we really needed to focus on, and we worked closely with our partners at the Grand Rapids Public Museum, the city Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., making sure that access was incorporated into this. There are a lot of investments going on in this river quarter, both in the wet and the dry, as you all know. The Grand Rapids Public Museum has a vision to get students, to get their public museum, high school students, down into the river to use the river as a classroom. They can't do that today because the river is too fast along the west bank. So right now, they've been going over to the east side, the east sidewalk, which has been, as many of you know, closed for a number of years, currently another project that's undergoing repair right now. So we worked closely with the design teams for the public museum and their restoration projects to incorporate these bank vein structures that actually slow down the water and create access opportunities. So they have universal accessible access designs as part of their project that will come right down into this kind of slow area in the river where students will be able to get out, take their water quality samples, and access and touch the river. There will be additional access as we pull out of Anabouen Park. Again, there's more plans to hopefully provide some additional universal access. So I just wanted to kind of nod to the coordination and the integration that must happen between the wet and the dry projects as well. Lastly, I just wanted to provide an update on the mussel relocation that occurred this summer. Many of you probably looked out there and saw divers out in the river. So we have state threatened mussel species as well as federally endangered mussel species. So therefore, we're required before construction can begin to actually go out and relocate these animals as they're referred to. So we had divers in the river, and thankfully, due to the low water, we actually finished this project significantly ahead of schedule. The divers were able to search 95% of the search area. They total found 9,040 mussels. 38 of those are federally endangered snuffbox mussels, roughly 2,000 Michigan state threatened endangered species, and then 7,000 common mussel species. And as of two weeks ago, all of those mussels were relocated to their new homes safely in other areas of suitable habitat in the Grand River. So that is exciting just because it really kind of signals the first of the in-channel work, and now we have provided the most ecological value, gotten those mussels out of the way. That kind of paves the road for future construction. So I just want to end there. I apologize if I went a little longer than initially planned, but I wanted to thank you for your continued support and understanding as we go through this very complex project. There is no doubt in my mind, as Janet mentioned, that this project and all the work that you all are doing in terms of the Grand River Greenway, the parks, the trails, improvements, that when all of this is said and done, we will have a very important asset in our natural river and in our parks and trails, and this is one important element of that overall picture as we look at a continuous Grand River Greenway trail within the county. So I thank you, Chair, and happy to take any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Matt. There are likely some questions here, so let's see what we have. Anyone? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I had a quick question about the banks and the river access. I may be mistaken, but I believe I saw at the artistic rendering level with 201 Market, you know, there's the green space that's being planned there. There was discussion of there being river access at that green space. With this new iteration, will that still be doable, or because things had to be altered and scaled, is that off the table?
Yeah, great question, and absolutely it's still doable. So again, the downstream boundary of our project is Fulton Street. The project will not change anything in terms of the hydraulics downstream of the river. So we had been involved with Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc. and the city as they developed those plans, and our hydraulic engineers were able to coordinate with their teams. And yes, those plans are still, as far as I'm aware, still in place, and there will be additional access down there as well.
And then, given the change in the scaling of the project, you know, obviously there's some trade-offs, that something that's more aggressive might be more enticing for experienced whitewater rafters to come here and ride these rapids. Have there been any, are there any studies that suggest that a more modest approach like rifling does a better job at attracting local residents to try, you know, being a tourist in their town, trying whitewater rafting? Has that at all been reviewed, or is there evidence that shows that might be a net benefit?
Yeah. One analogy that I can provide that I know, a project that I follow closely that's very similar to that is the Boardman Otto Way River Restoration in Traverse City. So again, there was never, there was rapids that were revealed there as part of that project too, but not aggressive whitewater. And what has happened up there, from my understanding talking to some of the partners and the agencies, is that there has been a significant increase in recreation from just paddling, you know, non-motorized paddling sports. So folks that want to come and canoe and kayak that river, in fact, now they're trying to manage, you know, how do you manage that increase in river users, paddling users as well as anglers? It's a great fishery as well. So yes, I do think that part of this will attract a different crowd. I do think that even parts of this design at higher water flows will attract some of the more energetic and more enthusiastic paddle users that want to go out and paddle some higher, faster water. But I do think that this project will be available for a variety of different users, and then again, combine that with new access opportunities and you can get more people into the river.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Boujack.
Thank you, Chair Stack. And Matt, appreciate you coming in this morning.
Thank you.
What happened to the boulders that were there originally? I mean, when they put the dams in, did they take boulders out of the river?
Yeah. So we actually have some photos. So we don't have any photographs of the original rapids. We started manipulating this river as early as the mid 1830s or early 1830s. So yes, the boulders were actually removed out of the river to help facilitate the transportation of logs down to the logging industry. We also, through some historical research, found out that in the 1920s, there was a program, I believe it was called the Scrip Program. It was a Depression-era program where they were actually paying people to go out into the river. We have a photo where they're going out and removing boulders to kind of beautify the river at that time, and a lot of that fill was actually, or that material was taken out of the river and used as either urban fill behind the flood walls, or as many people know too, the limestone was actually quarried in a lot of locations. St. Mark's Church, for example, is built with granite limestone boulders, and there's some other areas around the city that were built with material from the river.
Okay, and I have one more question. You said that the design of the rapid area is going to have pools that emulate the fish ladder so that the fish can go from section to section to section. And what type of maintenance is that going to require? Because the river's dynamic, I mean, it changes, the river changes itself, and it puts silt where, you know, you might not want it, and how is that going to be? How do you maintain that?
Yeah, another great question. So all of the structures, especially these two-channel-spanning riffle structures and that drop structure, all of those are designed to be stable. They're designed, overdesigned with big material, recognizing that, yes, rivers are dynamic. We have ice. We have things like that. So those structures are designed to really not need a tremendous amount of maintenance. Now, there will be a continuous maintenance and monitoring plan to ensure that the structures are doing what they are intended to do and maintain. Some of the other boulders, and this was some of the concept when we talked about these, especially these emergent habitat boulders, to your point... especially these emergent habitat boulders, to your point, boulders move in rivers all the time. So we know, we've done modeling to kind of know what the sediment load is that comes into this reach, what it would do as it goes through. We know that maybe some of these scattered boulders will settle into the river or will move down a little bit. Some of them will be actually constructed with a stronger footer boulder material so that they don't fall in. But that kind of gets to that natural process, that some of this, the key elements that need to be strong for things like flood protection, grade control, energy control, those are designed to be strong. And then the other aspects of it can kind of morph with the river as it changes naturally.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I think this is really an exciting project to think about. Our requirements for our next round of payments for this is based on $500,000 for the construction, construction milestone. What would be entailed in that?
Yes, that's a great question. As we were going through the language in the agreement, it looks like, and I will admit that I was not involved in the initial drafting of this language, but the indications are that the funds will be used for the upland infrastructure to support the restoration of the river. So that is things like the Anabouan Park, I'm sorry, Anabouan Park will be the main staging and access location. There will be quite a bit of work that has to be done just to get that park ready to get into the river. There will be causeways or access roads that have to be built off of Bridge Street to build the infrastructure for trucks, for the rock, the boulder to come in. There's wetland protection that has to be done. There's causeways that will have to be built into the river. So we will use the county agreement, or the county funds as outline in this agreement for those infrastructure-related needs to facilitate getting into the actual channel to do this work.
My second question, I don't mean for this to be antagonistic at all, but you've changed the scope of the project. The cost of the total project has gone down. So is the need less from Kent County?
Just for clarification, the cost of this project right now, again, the estimate is slightly higher than the previous project. So as I mentioned, we are kind of going through that process. There's been a number of changes, obviously economic changes, rock, boulder, labor costs, you know, we're trying to get a sense of, you know, those increases. So we are going through that process right now.
So what is the total cost estimated to be?
Eighteen to twenty million estimate right now.
Okay, I thought we were at one point talking forty million.
That's for the whole, forty-five million is the whole upper reach. If you flip back to this slide here, we kind of outlined that for you. So the upper, the total project with upper and lower was roughly forty-five million. The upper reach estimate of that, that included the removal of the dam and a new landprey barrier, was twenty-four to twenty-six. And then that lower reach estimate was roughly fifteen to nineteen million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the update. The one thing that I, I think you just mentioned it to Commissioner Hennessy, but the one thing that I'm, even after our meeting on finance, I'm struggling to understand a little bit, is for the county's remaining investment that we're considering of $900,000 in the 1.4 all-in, what, can you just help hit me over the head with it like I'm five years old, what that's going toward, what we're, what our investment is getting out of that, what you're going to use the funds for? Because it sounds like it's more supportive than it is, you know, actually, we're not going to have like a tangible thing that we can point to other than the project itself, but it's not, you know, if you can help me understand that a little bit.
Yeah, certainly. And again, I would, happy to defer to Administrator Vandenberg or other county staff on this. Again, the way that the current agreement is written is that the funds will be used for upland infrastructure to support the project. So as I mentioned, Anabouan Park is the key construction staging and access site. We can't just drive a bulldozer or construction equipment down into the river. There's a significant amount of work that has to take place just to prepare the site to get in. So as I just kind of was looking earlier at some of these projects, so what does it take for the upland infrastructure to support the restoration of the rapids? Site preparation of Anabouan Park, removing topsoil, removing sidewalks that are currently in place within the river. There will have to be constructions of specifically designed construction access roads, again, to get trucks in and out of the river, or I'm sorry, in and out of, from the street to the construction staging. Fencing signage, erosion control, wetland protection. We do have a couple of wetlands within the construction area that need to be protected in place. And then there will be a pretty substantial access causeway built out of natural rock and stone material that will take that equipment from the park into the river. Again, that has to be designed to minimize impacts to those wetlands. And then there's also other additional stormwater outfall protection, maintenance, things like that, we have to continue that, ensure that, you know, the construction's not blocking stormwaters that could create potential flooding, those sort of things. So as far as my understanding of the definition of upland infrastructure when this agreement was in place, it would fund those, but I am happy to work with county staff to provide any additional clarity on information on that.
I think that as I review the agreement, it's clear that the county contribution was to help shore up the capital stack to make the project go, and wasn't intended to go towards any specific feature or part of that lower reach, but to basically be a contributor to make the overall project happen.
Was that pun intended, Al? Shore up? Is it fair to say, and I understand Al's point too, that it's part of making the entire thing go? And now I'm the one that's not being antagonistic intentionally, but is it fair to say that that's, the county's piece of the funding will be sort of those temporary investments that we need from the infrastructure perspective upland to make it happen? Most of those things that I think you're talking about, Matt, are things that are going to go away after, after we've completed the project?
Correct, yes. I believe that's the same interpretation.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate all of the efforts that have gone into trying to make this happen. I feel sad that, I guess a related story that's kind of been out there recently is one of our country's more innovative companies, SpaceX, trying to do some rocket technology experiments in South Texas, and they basically keep running into so many different levels of government bureaucracy and red tape that it's impossible to like make any progress. I saw a, I was reminded of that story when I saw a comic with the Star Trek ship being tied down by a Conestoga wagon, which represented, you know, the various layers of government red tape. So sadly, I think it's a, it's a sad thing for our country that it's basically become impossible to do anything interesting in the United States anymore because there's so much red tape. And I feel like this is one example of that. My question is, will this happen to the upper reach project as well? Will we find that as we proceed and try to do this scaled-back version on the lower reach, that in some future date, when the upper reach project is actually going to happen, that in fact, it can't because we'll just hit so much government red tape?
A great question, and, you know, I admittedly don't have that crystal ball, but I'll respond to this and say I fully agree with your comments of just how frustrating this can be. We've worked tirelessly for this. The community has had a great vision and has supported this. I do hope that when this is all said and done, this can be a model for other projects. And certainly, we are taking very good notes on all of the lessons we've learned through this lower reach process and applying that with the state and federal partners in the upper reach. The upper reach is a little bit different beast because we do have this invasive sea lamprey that we must continue to block from going upstream. There's, the upper reach has other challenges, just with, it's really a different river system up there. So I would say that through this redesign process, the fact that we were able to work with the state and federal agencies, that this time, the permit application didn't take two years to get administratively complete, but just a few months. Granted, we still don't have a permit, I'm mindful of that, and there's still opportunities for federal comment, but we've built a new relationship with the state and federal agencies. We're better understanding their needs. I think they're better understanding our vision as a community. And so we will do everything we can do to take what we learned and apply that to the upper reach to achieve as much of that original vision as possible. There are some very complex discussions that will have to take place. It's likely that the original vision of the upper reach, as I mentioned, may not be fully achievable, but I think we can continue to get back some of that original vision, and we'll do just what we did down here and try to maximize that to the best that we can.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I remember a few years ago, when I was still a student at GRCC, so maybe around 2017, 2018, I had a professor who I believe was from Illinois, and I can't remember what we were talking about that day, but he just said something along the lines of, there's your, there's your river, is it grand? Or where are the rapids at, basically? Why is it named that? And for some reason, for whatever reason, that stuck with me, partly because it was funny and partly because I just was also wondering what happened to our rapids. I unfortunately won't be on this board anymore when the project gets off the ground and once we see the results of it. But I look forward to voting in favor of giving you all the support that we had committed to, to get this off the ground and have the restoration happen. I don't have a question for you, but thank you for being here today and for the work that you do.
Thank you for your comments and support.
All right. I have a couple of questions if I could. October 15, that's a big day. That is the date you anticipate the decision on the current application?
No, just a correction. The October 15 date is the timeline that federal agencies have to respond back to the state. So that is the date that we anticipate all comments from EPA, Fish and Wildlife will be sent to the state. The state will then have to aggregate those comments. They may need to ask for an extension. We're hoping that by the end of the year or early in 2025, that the state will be able to make their decision on the permit, actual issuance.
And it was the federal comment that sort of hit us against the wall last time. So if we get past October 15 without objections from the federal government, you're optimistic that this will move quickly through the rest of the process?
Correct, yep. In terms of the state process, there are, there is a process of permit application out with FEMA, so FEMA is undergoing another review. Obviously, flooding is a huge concern. FEMA and the state will work on that. And then there is some additional, there's opportunity for some additional federal funds through the Natural Resource Conservation Service. I didn't touch on this previously, but there was 4.1 million previously allocated. Those funds expired with the delays in the project, so the city now has an option to pursue some additional funds that could provide up to 50% of the cost. That environmental review process is also ongoing with the Natural Resource Conservation Service, should be concluded sometime in the spring.
So again, if there are objections, again, asserted, then it's back to the joint board, I assume. If there are not, we move forward. What would be a reasonable anticipated date to complete Phase One, if we can get past that?
Yeah, assuming there's no major objections, and, you know, again, we have, hopefully have great weather and things like that. The earliest we could start the construction in the river is July 1 because of some of the sea lamprey migration and fish migration windows that we have. So assuming we have a great low-water year, the, we're hoping that it could be built in one year if we're really lucky and have good water, but it might take two years to build this lower-reach process. So assuming, you know, start date of July 1, they would work roughly until probably October or November of each year, depending on flows.
Okay. And again, our obligation, again, as I've read the agreement, the county's obligation is to contribute to the costs of the upland improvements or processes that is out of the water. We don't cover the cost of the actual restoration process, and it's only in that Phase One component of this project. Am I correct that, as you describe that, it sounds like that really doesn't materially change from the original concept to this concept? Well, the restoration has changed. The upland process is kind of the same, isn't it?
Correct. There's been some minor adjustments, well, significant adjustments of construction methodology in the channel, but the way we access into and out of the river has not changed substantially as a result of this design.
Okay. So we're providing, we would be providing the cost about the same processes as before, but it may go up a little bit. The economic impact study was done on the original project, and I presume that we're here because you're still excited about even the modified plan and that it will achieve some significant enhancements to this community. Has there been a modified economic impact study done?
There has not yet in terms of this new design, partially because, again, we're, it's not a final design right until we have permits, so there still was opportunity for, you know, potential changes. But I think that's something that we could certainly look at, and I think it would also benefit to, I don't know if there's any effort that has gone underway to quantify the economic impact of all of these investments in the Grand River Greenway, wet and dry, and what that looks like for the community as well.
So nobody knows the project better than you. What's your sense of the economic impact? It will be about the same, less?
Again, that original study, those numbers were derived from multiple components. So whitewater users increase was a portion of it. Obviously, we're not going to be attracting those users, but other, I certainly believe that by taking the dams out, that there will be more opportunities and for more people to get in the river. Janet and I and others do tours, walking tours along the river all the time, and it's amazing on a beautiful, warm, sunny day how few people actually use the river. And I think that's in large part because of the dams that are in place today and the limited access. So I fully believe that, yes, there will be tubers, kayakers, canoeers that'll be using this river. I hope to see some entrepreneurs that want to take a guest from the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel, put them in the river, and go down to Johnson Park or Millennium Park and pick them up and bring them back. I do think that there will be a lot of those opportunities available.
Okay. And Phase Two, still in play?
Still in play, yes.
Do I hear you say that Phase One has to be completed for Phase Two to be a likely probability or possibility?
Yeah, before the Great Lakes Fisher Commission can start to evaluate all the available alternatives for that upper reach, they need to know what will be built in the lower reach so that we can put those into the hydraulic models. The last thing they want to do is design a lamprey barrier only to find out that something in the lower reach hydraulically doesn't allow that to function. So once the lower reach permits are secure, they will resume that process. That'll probably be a two-year process, as we've been told, and they will look at all of the available alternatives for, you know, for the upper reach project.
Okay. All right, good. There's nothing else. Thank you so much for your presentation this morning. Thank you, Janet, for being here, and we look forward to hearing more.
Great, thank you.
All right, next opportunity, next item is public comment, first opportunity. Those that want to address us with respect to agenda items only, you may do so at this time, please identify yourself by name and your address, and you have up to three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
And other commissioners and staff and fellow citizens. Daniel Allen Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, of course. Thank you, Commissioner Diaz, for your invocation. By the way, your first name means the Lord is gracious, and he certainly is. The scriptures you quoted near the end there, the lamb and the lion lying down together, speaks of the thousand-year reign of the Lord Jesus Christ, prophesied in the Bible. And it's going to be here on earth, and as Mr. Dr. King quoted, all of us will bow down at that judgment seat that the Lord Jesus Christ will be on. Okay. I want to address finances, particularly what I just heard. I live near the river, have for 30 years. I enjoy many of the blessings that come having that river there, but I'm talking about a lot of money here, and I'm not sure if we can afford that, in my personal opinion. I am a taxpayer, and I'm concerned about these shiny objects that the county and the city, state, federal government is just spending like a drunken sailor. In my opinion, these, what we just heard about, should be financed privately, not with our taxes. I realize maybe that's already in the process. But again, I want to remind you, and maybe this is more of a city issue, but still, Grand Rapids is in Kent County. Most of you have probably heard of this main water break between Adams and Hall this past summer, where many houses were greatly damaged. And I was just at the city meeting two nights ago, and they're still dealing with that, hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. And it's just going to happen over and over again. We live in an aging community, especially those of us in certain parts of the city. In my opinion, this money could be better spent on these sort of issues. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Agenda items only at this time. Okay. If not, we'll move to the next item, which is the consent agenda and I will call on Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I move today's consent agenda.
Before we ask for a second, I note that it says approval of minutes of September 26. I don't think we're that good, so that's probably September 12. So you accept that modification in your motion?
Yes, Chair.
Is there support? Support, supported. Questions or comments on the consent agenda motion? If not, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, Legrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Brevi, Coleman, Burl.
Here.
Yes.
Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Vice Chair Green, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our resolutions and for the first resolution, I'll call in Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 106 of today's date, West Michigan Welcome Plan Annual Global Gathering and Maximize Economic Potential Event Donations from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. That motion is approved. Thank you. For our next item, I will refer to Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 107, the winter 20, Resolution 107 of today's date, winter 2024 Dedicated Millage Property Tax Levy coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Diaz. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 107, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, Legrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Brevi, Coleman, Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Vice Chair Green, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 107 is adopted.
Thank you. That's the end of our resolutions for today. I will now move to public comment, the second opportunity. If anyone is here that wishes to address the board with respect to our general jurisdiction matter, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself by name, your address, and you have up to three minutes. And good morning.
What up though? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue. First of all, I'd like to say I'm just thankful to be alive and, you know, get up and get out here, some people that didn't wake up today. First off, I want to say I'm excited because I found out, I didn't say this to the whole board, but I found out that I was one of the finalists for the Forbes 30 Under 30 for Games and it's super cool to be able to be such a, I'm 30 now, but I filled it out when I was 29, so it was pretty cool. I'm just excited because we know this is the second worst city for economic development for African Americans and the work that I do is into this, improve the lives of African Americans, but everyone and everyone across Kent County and the state and as far as my work can go, I try to do everything for everybody and I'm just very thankful to be one of the finalists for the Forbes 30 Under 30 for Games because I actually have a Forbes article. I was on Forbes in 2020 and that's pretty cool. But I also wanted to speak on some cool things that came from there. So people have been seeing what I've been doing in MYSEF, which is the Michigan High School Esports Federation. It's the largest esports organization for esports infrastructure, K through 12 education. They actually asked me to be on the advisory board for this organization, for the work that I've been doing across Kent County with the Youth Justice Esports Influence League, helping the school with infrastructure and KDO and these other activations that I've been doing. Also, I just came from Confluence Festival. We had the Confluence Festival here, downtown here and it was a pretty cool event. They had the esports event and had all of the Division One colleges and NAIA's and some of the best high schools across the state from some of them are in you guys' jurisdictions. And I got to interview the Division One coaches, so Michigan State University. I got to get on the production truck and Ferris State University is the only university that actually has a college degree for esports production. I also got to interview the head coach of Oakland University. So I got to do these cool interviews and things like that. So I got some cool content out there interviewing the coaches because as you guys know, I help build infrastructure. I'm also going to create those paths that help the students also get to these colleges and eventually get a college degree, but also a good paying job that's above the poverty line because that's the goal, is to get people out of poverty regardless of their ethnicity, is to just help the economy and just to help our county and our state and our cities and the cities that you guys do your work in. So I'm very excited for these cool things and also Epic Games contacted me. I spoke to my friend Steve Isaac who works for Epic Games and he also connected me to one of the universities because Epic Games is a $32 billion company that has never been to the state, but they actually want to come to the state and actually do a game gym, which is going to be huge. It'll be the first time they ever came here, this through Dee Jones, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners. I'm Tamara Lopez and I'm running for Kent County Probate Judge. This judge is assigned to the family court. What the general population doesn't know that this judge's docket would look like would be only 15% family law and the rest is specialty consisting of like PPOs, child protective proceedings and juvenile delinquency. I'm the only candidate that has all aspects of the docket. We do use the esports and juvenile delinquency. It's been a great program. Also, a little bit about myself, I've been an attorney for 14 years practicing all areas of that docket. I'm a wife, mother, stepmother and a grandmother. My model is really trying to keep Kent County families together all while keeping the best interests of the children at the forefront of my decisions. I am endorsed by eight Kent County judges, several community leaders, and also recently just found to be well qualified by the Judicial Review Committee for the Grand Rapids Bar Association. I welcome your votes along with the Kent County residents. Thank you.
Good morning again. Good morning again. I'm still Daniel Scott. I still live in the county. Holy scripture says, "This act does the Lord hate." Yes, this act is an abomination unto him, hands that shed innocent blood. I want to give you another reason that we need to pray against and shut down 425 East Cherry, referred to as Planned Parenthood. This comes from the Center for Medical Progress, releasing videos, footage of Planned Parenthood partner admitting that body parts were harvested from aborted babies who still had beating hearts. This video exposes the testimonies of several top Planned Parenthood officials and a human tissue procurement company leader during a 2019 sworn legal deposition. Perhaps the most horrific testimony came from Perrin Lartan, the procurement manager at Advanced Bioscience Resources, which harvests aborted baby parts at Planned Parenthood facilities in Southern California. In her sworn testimony, Lartan admitted that she has been aborted babies' hearts beating independently after they are born. She also confirmed that some aborted babies' bodies are fully intact. Lartan explained that most aborted babies come out of the womb in pieces, but sometimes we see intact bodies. Asked about these situations, Lartan replied, "They just sometimes fall out," unquote, of the mother when she delivers the baby in the abortion operating room. When questioned about how often that occurs, she replied, "Once every couple months." Asked what happens next, Lartan said that a staffer does a dissection on the intact aborted baby to get the tissues that the researchers have requested. When asked if the babies that just fall out have a heartbeat, she responded, "It would depend because I can see hearts that are not intact, but still beating." Also important to note, this organization sells aborted baby parts to researchers whose projects are funded by you and I. Other testimony in the video came from Deborah, whatever her last name is, the former Senior Director of Medical Services for Planned Parenthood nationally. She was caught in the first Center of Medical Progress video eating salad, sipping wine, while talking about how she crushes unborn babies' heads to better complete the process. Let's shut down 425 East Cherry, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Javonte Tubbs. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm a resident of Kent County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to speak to you guys about conservatorship and guardianship, more specifically Judge Markowski and his vehement and passionate advocacy for professional guardianship in Kent County and how that is kind of, you know, ripping families apart. I mean, I know you guys probably saw his, his presentation to the Senate and how he is, how he, how his position is for professional guardianship. This is essentially strangers giving guardianship and conservatorship over your mom, over my mother, over your grandparents. And once this conservatorship or guardianship is placed over your, over your loved one, they have absolutely no rights anymore. They're considered incapacitated. Whether they are or not, they're considered incapacitated. They have no voice, they have no power, or they have no kind of dictation over their own life. And, and what Markowski is pushing is for a stranger, not a family member, a stranger to have this power over, over your loved one. And he's done it numerous times. And I ask myself, why is he so vehement and passionate about this professional guardianship? And I, I read a letter that says he has a professional guardianship program that is funded by the state through the county. So this is an interest that he should not have while he's sitting on, while he's sitting on the bench presiding over these hearings because he's, it's no way you can have this position, you can have this interest, which is a conflict of interest. It kind of reminds me of the Exodus Program that these 12 judges had that they shut down because of a conflict of interest. This is the same thing. It's a conflict of interest. I mean, he, yeah, it's a conflict of interest. So what he's doing is he has his guardian at Lytton who he handpicked and she's one-sided in the courtroom and I've seen this. So both sides of the parties are not being, are not given an equitable chance to, to, to give their testimony as to why they should be guardianship or conservatorship. One side and it's handpicked by his guardian at Lytton who he handpicked. So I, I don't think he should be able to sit and preside over these hearings based on his bias, based on his inability to be fair. You know, when families come in and want this conservatorship or, or guardianship over their loved one. If he has these interests and he has this program, this professional guardianship program, that is a conflict of interest and I don't believe he can be impartial. I don't believe he can be non-biased when it comes to giving families their right to have, to, to care for their loved ones. He's going to funnel those, those, those elders into this professional guardianship program that he has and we all know when a program is funded, you have to show need. So the only way he can show need is to continue to funnel elders into his program. It's unjust and it's immoral and we have to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm here to share my experience with Kent County Guardianship. I'm sorry, let me back up. I'm Roslyn Harris and I am a Kent County resident, 2140 Hearthstone in Caledonia. I'm here to share my experience with the Kent County Guardianship Program. During my brief research efforts, I've learned the board does approve funding along with several hospitals in the county. I've also learned that Kent County Senior Millage Tax funds this program. The concern that I have is there's minimum oversight related to the wars of county records as well. Also, I asked the Commissioner Board to investigate, to review, to determine how this funding is being used and who actually is benefiting from this funding. Lastly, a professional guardianship should only be appropriate for those people who do not have anyone willing and able to serve in that capacity. MCL 75313 is a Michigan statute that spells out the priority for assignment of the guardianship. However, this is not being followed in the Kent County courtrooms. My mother is currently a victim of this program. I would like this comment placed on the record and I would ask that the Commissioner Board please follow up on my concerns and the gentleman previously had of me concerns. This is a big deal. I ask that you guys go out and research guardianship movies. It's really happening and it can happen to anyone and it should not have happened to my mother. I'm still paying out attorney fees trying to get her out of this. Attorney General is in support of these reform bills, HB 4909, 4912. Please research those. It's very important. People's lives are depending on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If no one else, that brings us to the end of public comment. We'll now move to Administrator's Report.
Yes, just a few items today. It's been really busy downtown and in and about the county building with the Right Places Tech Week and Art Prize and conferences going on. It's just a lot happening right now. I returned, I've spent the weekend in Pittsburgh at the ICMA International City County Management Association Conference. Mark Rambo and Jesse Harris were there as well. And really, the, when you look at conference topics, it's still all about affordable housing, mental health, finance, technology, especially how to manage all the different aspects of AI as it descends on us. Opioids, one of the things, I'm on the board of the National Association of County Administrators and we, one of our meetings is held at this conference and we do a nuts and bolts session where administrators from all over the country come together and talk, and ask questions and talk about the big issues they're facing. And so one of the ones on the agenda that I moderated was, you know, we've been working with the clerk to try to deal with an unfunded mandate that happened last year and that was the Michigan Second Chance Sentencing Act where records can be expunged. It puts a huge amount of responsibility on the clerk and even makes certain mistakes criminally liable and yet no funding or staffing was provided to do this. Now, the board dealt with this in the budget and so we do have a good model going forward. But when we talk about, you know, working to undo the mandates, getting the state to fund the requirements they put on us, this is a very recent example that has created problems for businesses because county clerk's offices around the state are simply but not staffed to deal with having to manage this, this new unfunded mandate that was dropped on them. Again, this is just, again, in my, I feel the need to make sure there's clarity in how our finances work because when things are said that aren't quite accurate, there's people watching, there's people hearing and I hate to have that many misconceptions. So the, the total 1.4 million for the Restore the Rapids and of course, 500 has been spent, so there's 900,000 left, that's been set aside in a CIP budget since 2018. So that isn't new money the board is deciding to allocate. And then when we look at the flooding of the stormwater system in Grand Rapids, again, the city has responsibility for stormwater drainage and for water and sanitary sewer systems. The county doesn't have that responsibility. It would not be able to confer an individual benefit such as taking money by not spending money on the restoring the Rapids project and giving that money to individual residents to help with that problem. So there are differences in what city in what cities and counties do under law and so I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that that would not be a possibility to approach the problem and, and help out in that fashion. So myself and a couple others did a presentation for a general session at MAC up in Grand Traverse yesterday. And then the last thing I just wanted to quickly do an update on is that the implementation of the Public Defender's Office probably couldn't go better. So at this point, our Public Defender Julia Kelly has hit the ground running. We've been able to hire the two top assistant public defenders, one for administration, one for the Trial Division. Training director's been hired and right on the schedule that HR laid out, you know, we're, we're getting a robust number of applications. There's a lot of interest in working for the Kent County Public Defender's Office. So I, I think that, as I've said before, we'll look back on this after a year and I think we'll count this as a success and we'll have a well-functioning office with a lot of folks in it. And the Independence Committee Commission, also, all those folks have been named. And so
Submit that.
Yeah, and which Stan will submit. And the tech, I know the, the software's on order for the office. I know we're very close, maybe even tomorrow, on the transition agreement and the space transferal of the lease for the space that the, the group is in. So again, I couldn't be more pleased with how, how the transition's going. And that's it for me today.
All right, thank you. That'll bring us to reports. Does any Commissioner have a report? Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you Chair Stuck. We had an Experience Grand Rapids Board Meeting last week. I serve, I represent the board. Administrator Vanderburg and I attended. All looks good in the county from a tourism standpoint. There's a lot of excitement beyond the heels of Art Prize coming to town. Room bookings are strong, convention business is strong and it's, I enjoy the service on the board and it's, it's so impressive. You know, you, you work at, the, the group, Experience Grand Rapids and the leadership team there worked, you know, years in advance to book these large conferences here in town. So they're looking at year two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight and beyond to get big business here in, in, in our community. So great work by that team led by the leadership of Doug Small. So any questions, any Commissioner has about their work, I'd be happy to, happy to dive a little deeper. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, if not, I have one report and that is, as Administrator Vanderburg indicated, we have pursuant to the board's resolution to stand up the Indigent Defense Department as well, appoint and create an Independence Council. And it was my responsibility under that resolution to identify and appoint, subject to this board's approval, members of that council. The individuals that I'm proposing to appoint would be Deborah Hughes from the Legal Assistance Center, Sarah Riley Howard from Pinsky Smith, Mark Dodge from Dodge and Dodge, Thomas Murray, who is the Treasurer of the Grand Rapids Bar Association, and myself. Those are individuals who fit the profile that was set in that resolution and that motion. So that's who I am proposing to appoint if there is a motion to approve.
I move the appointment of the individuals named by the Chair to the Public Defender Independence Council.
Moved and supported. Questions or comments? If not, all those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Very good, thank you. We will get that Commissioner Council set up and move forward. All right, if no other reports, that gets us to miscellaneous, any miscellaneous items? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you Chair. I was just wondering or hoping if you could, when you get a chance, give us some information on some of the public comment that we had around conservatorships and specifically these bills that were mentioned. I don't know if that's going to change the, if that's going to affect the county and the work that we do or not. I'm just curious about it.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly send copies of the bills and also, I'm guessing we can get a copy of Judge Markowski's presentation. And then maybe some information on how that program works and how it's funded, so that everyone's a little more up to speed on that. And then I think it was accurately represented that there is no county oversight of the work, but of course the county holds a purse string. So that's one of those mutually assured destruction aspects of county government, so.
All right. Commissioner Hennessy.
Well, we reached the end of September and the beginning of October, so we're coming up on Pulaski Days. And the ceremonies to open the week of Pulaski are this Sunday already, two o'clock at Saint, it's, no, it's not Saint, at Diamond Street Hall. And everybody is welcome to attend and we have our resolution of annual support for this, this event. And the parade will be on Saturday, October fifth. So join in the festivities.
Proclamation has been signed.
The proclamation has been signed.
All right, any other miscellaneous items? If not, I have one. There is a, a work session after this to assist us in a key component of our strategic planning. I'm hoping that most of you can be there. Can I, for us to work, we need to have a pretty good attendance. Can those who are going to be able to attend this, let me know right now?
Yeah, I think we have to move forward with it and may, we might be able to, well, yeah, let's move forward today and see how it goes and see what the next step could be.
As you recall, we had to cancel this once before because of timing, so good. Thank you all for being there. With that, I will call on Mr. Diaz for one last motion.
Thank you Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at eight thirty AM for an official meeting.
All those that support, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.